Call meeting to order. Thank you folks for being here tonight. If you would please bow your head so you have permission to be in the case. My Lord and Father, we come before you tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you have afforded us in this life. And we ask that you be with those folks affected by Hurricane Harvey and any that might be affected by any subsequent hurricanes. We appreciate the outpouring that is being shown to those folks that shows the goodness in America. And we ask that you continue to lead us in that direction so that we can have goodness in our hearts in regard to our fellow man. Oh Lord, we ask for your guidance. We ask for strength. We ask for courage and patience as we deliberate in the business of Harris County. Help us to make the best decisions for the long term and for the citizens involved. We ask, oh Lord, that you bless all of our citizens, keep them safe, keep them healthy, and keep them ever in your family. We ask these things in praise. Amen. Now I'd like to call on our Assistant Director of EM 8911, Jamie White, to lead us in the place of leaders. Jamie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the minutes from the regular session of August the 15th and then for the planning session on August the 11th. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve both. Second?
Motion to approve both. Any second? Any discussion, corrections? All in favor, please signify raising your hand. Motion carries down this one. Any care of citizens, Nancy?
Yes, sir.
Old business, we have one item of old business on the agenda, and that is Phase Four of the CAD 911 system. It was included in the original proposal with the cost to be determined. This was tabled at our last meeting until we got a few more specifics. The cost has been determined to be $54,000. And scope of work has been provided, details included. Wendy Bradford with TUSA is here to present and explain further, answer any questions we might have at this point.
Yeah, I would just, this is actually the presentation for the CAD system and the recommendation on that, but I can answer any questions you may have. This is Dennis Ward, he's the project manager on the project within this stuff. Answer any questions you may need.
What was his last name, Dennis?
Ward.
Ward, your area D. Okay, thank you.
Dennis is the one that gives us the written reports so there's a face behind the email.
Okay. So what this will do is protect the county from the change orders, make sure that the vendors are adhering to the contract exactly the way they're supposed to, and that you're doing exactly what you're supposed to, with no shortcuts being taken to get there. We just protect you basically, your financial investment.
Well, I had asked for this, and I'm very pleased with what you provided, so thank you for that. I always lighten up when I pay for them.
Absolutely.
It's good to have that level of detail. It really is. It's nice to know that you're over there to help us out, make sure we get what we need. We've not had that for a while. We want to do it right. Okay, so you want to go through any kind of presentation, or is this what you want later on?
This is for the CAD recommendation. If you want to go through now, I mean, do that.
This is number eight.
This is eight, okay. Yeah, let's hold off for now, man. This is, does anyone have any questions? I think.
My question, what do you picture for $4,000 to get? What can I page for? It was like 468. Is that, I'm not reading something?
Plus the travel on this thing.
Okay, okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, then do I have a motion?
I make mention. We accept this Phase Four cost of $54,000.
Okay, you have a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify raising your hand. Motion carries down this one. Okay, thank you folks. Thank you. I don't know if this is Alan next. Any other old business before we move on? Okay, next is new business, also of TUSA, is the evaluation of the Tetra radio system. Alan Cuts of TUSA is here and is going to present this evaluation report to Alan.
Yes, thank you very much for having me. We spent possibly about six months evaluating the current Tetra system that you're on, and we went through all the sites, we talked to a number of the agencies, interviewed them, and we found that this system was what we suspected it would be at the beginning. This is a Tetra radio system which is used primarily in Europe for public safety over there, and it is a mobile system for the diverse power. And when we started to look at this and do some evaluations on it, we realized that your system that you're on really is not your system, it belongs to diverse power. There is no contract that you have with the diverse power, and this is creating problems in getting the attention that you need on this system. Another thing is that because it's a mobile design system, it, public safety relies heavily on portable radios. Portable radios really are where all public safety training is done with. It's fast, and they're in businesses and houses and things like that. And a portable radio is really their primary radio. Mobile radios are used a lot, but portable is where it's all centered around. And that has been what the problem has been with getting a mobile system into a portable environment, that we found that it would be so many sites you would have to add to this system to meet the industry standard 95 percent coverage, that it just was not cost effective to try to get this system to that level of performance. And that really is not exactly great news. That's not something that we take great joy in telling you, that you've asked us to look at this system, and this is kind of the recommendation machine, that it's just not going to get to 95 percent coverage. It was not designed that way. Power trunk has told us that. And we priced out what it would take to do a radio system in this county, and it's around $10 million. And that is just for the radio system. That's not anything else but LAN acquisitions or anything else. And this has been a very difficult report for me to have to do, because normally when we're brought into counties, counties usually have a radio system that is primarily designed for public safety. It doesn't quite perform as well. We can usually look at it and do some small things here, large things here, and bring it up and get it to communicate with other counties and this, that, and the other. Problem is, is when you had these tornadoes some years ago, you had a VHF system, it didn't really perform very well at all. Tornadoes came through, and this looked like a very viable option. It really did. But the problem is, is it was a level increase in performance, but you can't go much beyond that. And that is what makes it a very difficult thing to try to improve. We've tried various scenarios in trying to get the coverage up to where it needed to be, but there was other issues beside coverage. There was the liability of the system. And that's really important to public safety, because radio systems and public safety have to be operational in the worst of conditions. And it's not like cellular networks. Cellular networks can go off the air when conditions are worse. You have an ice storm, you lose power. They don't buy a lot of battery backup. The sites eventually go down, no big deal. Cellular company realizes, oh, we may lose a few customers, but where are they going to go? It's driven by profit. Public safety systems are totally different. When the conditions are at their worst, it has to be there, because not only are public safety lives at stake, but citizens' lives are at stake. And that has been part of the problem with your system now, is that it really hasn't been a lot of design or focus on where you're going with it. It's been kind of, well, we think we could, if we spend this money here, this might work. And you spend the money, but there's no real contracts, there's no real accountability. There's no real performance criteria that has to be met, and therefore it just wanders. It just eats up money, it kind of wanders along, and that's a problem. Now, what we did is we realized, okay, we can't get you guys to 95 percent. The money you would spend, you might as well buy a whole new system. So we have to back up a little bit and say, all right, what can we do to at least get it to the 80 percent or more that it's currently designed to do? So we went through and identified a number of problems, and we said, there are some issues. One of the biggest issues you have is on the west side of the county. The west side of the county has a huge coverage problem in the coverage maps. And we noticed that right off from the beginning. The agencies told us that, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department's saying, over on that side are saying, yeah, we have a coverage problem over here. And when we ran the analysis, it confirmed it, that there is a coverage hole, a big one, over on the west side. We ran a couple of locations. We had one location that we saw as a cellular power, let's try that. And the numbers came back pretty small. And then your radio vendor suggested another location, so we ran that, again, running it with small numbers. And the reason that is, is that you're on a European-type standard system, and these radios just don't have very much power, because we suspect this has probably got something to do with the European Union, that they regulate things a little different than the FCC in the US, and that these radios, they only got about 1.8 watts of power out, it's not very much. Plus, they're on a UHF band, and this gets technical, and I may lose you in the weeds, but I'll try not to go too deep into this, but the tower sites in a nutshell just aren't designed to give maximum impact to coverage. So you put in a tower site over here on the west side, the numbers confirm, the percentages only go up two or three percent. And that's why, you know, it just doesn't look like you could really get to 95. So we're saying, all right, we do have a hole over there on that west side. We have identified one location, it looks like it covers some areas that are, or, you know, some populated areas that we could help, but it will get you up to around 82 percent, about all you're going to get. That's the biggest expense that we see that you would have to do in this. There's other things that we indicate on here that you need to do as far as maintaining the system. The system has to be maintained, and somebody has to have their finger on the pulse of how this thing's operating. It's not a matter of just install it and walk away. It's a constant monitoring of the performance of this system. Every county that I've ever done work for has a coverage test. They know from a vendor, they have a contract with a vendor, and they said, we're going to spend this many million dollars on a radio system, and we expect this kind of coverage, and we want this coverage test to prove that this vendor is meeting this performance level. And vendors know that going in. And the vendor does the coverage test, and it's a standard of how that system is operating. And that's really valuable, because if you start getting complaints from users in the field, the sheriff's office, the fire department saying, you know, over here around Pine Mountain we're having problems, well, they can go back, look at that coverage test, and figure out, we should be working well over here according to this, so something has gone wrong, and you guys didn't have that. And you need to have some way of determining how this thing is performing, so that you can quickly identify where these problems are. And another thing that really made this very difficult, this is one of the most difficult evaluations I've ever had to do, and that is, because you do not own this system, you do not have any say in this system legally, the vendor doesn't even know really that you exist. And so I'm having to work with a vendor who could care less, because they have no obligation to the county at all. And that is a problem. When you're operating a public safety system, you have to have accountability, especially with your vendor, to perform at a certain level. If you don't have that kind of contract in place, you can't quickly resolve issues. One of the biggest things that we ran into was getting the log reports from the vendor. It took over two months. And normally, that's done in radio systems where you have a contract with the vendor, usually get that done in a week, if that long. It can really happen much faster than that. But it took two months of having to deal with a vendor to, they're not obligated to anything you do. So that was a problem that we really uncovered, is that accountability has to be in this system. So we've outlined a number of things to do to improve the performance of this system, and it comes around just under 1.5 million dollars. It's expensive, because again, you're using a European-type model on a UHF system that is nine sites in this county, plus two sites that help support the overall system. So you've got 11 sites, and yet it still doesn't meet the coverage parameters. And that's reflected from what we're reading with the interviews with the agencies. And this is not exactly something that I enjoy telling people. I regret telling people that. It's like a doctor telling a patient they have terminal cancer. It's not good news at all. It's not something I enjoy doing. And I've tried to find any way I can to find a bright spot in this, but with this system, they're really not. So one of the first things that we flagged even before the report was finished was, you have to have a contract or some kind of mutual understanding with diverse power on this system, because you can't spend this kind of money on a system that you have no say in at all. So we flagged that from the very beginning, and you've already gotten Nick Tusa involved in negotiating with this contract. The second part of it is, all right, here are some things you could do to improve this system. We've outlined them on here, and it's expensive, because again, you have 11 sites in this county. That's a lot of sites, but it's a lot of sites because that's the type of system you're backed into. Now, a lot of people, you may ask, isn't there a cheaper way? And I agree, this should be. But here's where your problem is. You've gone onto a Tetra system, which is a trumped system. By that, I mean it's a very high-tech digital system like the P-25 systems you see around the US. In order to get you to a cheaper system, you're going to have to take a step back in technology, and that generally doesn't go very well with your agencies. And not only that, when you get into some of those older technologies, they create their own problems. Many counties around you around VHF and UHF systems, they have problems as well. I know plenty of counties that have plenty of problems with the radio system. It's easier for them to deal with that kind of stuff, because they haven't gone into a digital trumped environment. You have, and that's unfortunate, because it's not a good environment to be in. But to get you out of that into a cheaper one is a step back in technology. And that's just not something that agencies take very well. It's not something that counties, and every county that I've ever dealt with that has a VHF system where we have tried to improve it, eventually just gives up and goes to the more expensive systems. So in a nutshell, without going on to a lot of the details of the report, we've had it for over a week. That's basically what we have found that it's going to take, that we found, you had various problems with the system, it was just, you know, accountability, because you don't have a contract with anybody, so nobody's really accountable to anything. And I think that, you know, your two-way service tries, they really do, but again, you don't have any accountability, any contracts to them. You have them spend money on stuff, but there has to be a goal where you're going. And eventually, you're going to have to, in the long run, you're going to have to really think about getting off this system, and that's just not something you're going to do tomorrow. So in the short term, these are some things you could do to improve the performance of the system. It's expensive. Maybe with your contract with diverse power, they could absorb some of these costs, we hope so, because they own the system, they would benefit from some of these things as well. But that's something to be worked out, which we flagged from the beginning, that has to be addressed. Then down the road, there has to be serious thought, is where are you going to go at the worst? Because I can't see staying on this type of system as being a long-term option, because it just doesn't, it doesn't communicate with other counties. It's a technology that's used in Europe and not used by public safety here, and that's where they have to communicate with. So basically, in a nutshell, that is what we found in the report. And I'm ready for any questions that you might have.
Alan, at one point in time, we were being told that, yes, it wasn't this system coming into this country, and the state of Georgia was really key, you know, that most of the state of Georgia would be going to this type of system. Where does that state?
That may stand for public, for diverse power. Power companies in general will go to Tetra, because it's, you know, it works very well for trumped systems. You have a mobile radio, it works very well. I haven't seen anybody in the US on a public safety Tetra system, because it just, it just, part of the problem is, like, the radios are built toward European standards, and Europeans have pretty strict standards about the power output and that kind of stuff. There's not a big enough market to make more high-power portables here, so you get what they get. So it's just, it's not, I haven't seen any public safety agencies in the US ever ask for Tetra. It's always power companies, they would go for it. And energy companies like ExxonMobil and stuff like that, they use that. We've worked on a Tetra system with ExxonMobil, but not public safety. It's usually P-25 or a DMR-type system.
Alan, you mentioned a moment ago that other counties that have used VHF ended up going to a more expensive system to get, to meet their needs. What kind of system is that? It sounded to me like we need to, I don't know, just maybe not even go with any further to Tetra, could put money on the band.
It's usually, in dealing with counties, it starts out with, most counties don't want to spend money. It's a sticker shop. And that's understandable, because it is expensive. It really is. I've dealt with some counties in North Georgia that had that same problem. It, you know, we cannot afford this. And then in Ringgold, in 2011, they had eight people killed in a tornado, and that was in the neighboring county of Woodfield. Well, Woodfield County is decided, it's a TUSA county. But what had happened is, at that point, they started to realize, okay, this is serious. And generally, I've been brought in by various counties, and they run the gamut. Some don't want to spend money, some are really devoted to it, and it's usually the ones that are devoted to it who have been hit with a fatality, or a number of fatalities. When that happens, there's usually a change of heart. And then that's what exactly happened in Woodfield. They did a splash, and were just completing a $12 million radio system for Woodfield County, because that hit really close to home for them. That wasn't in their county, but it was too close for comfort. So they generally will eventually go to an 800, 700 system. But it's a new technology, fairly new, but it's proven. And the reason it's proven is because it is, when you invest that kind of money in a system, they put you on a very protected frequency. That's why when you had your experience with 800, it got cut down, because the state frequency coordinator noticed that there was a problem when they tried to implement that site on Pine Mountain. And they basically said, no, you can't do that, because they protect those frequencies, because there's many counties around that invest big money into these systems, and the only way that's going to work is if those things are highly regulated and protected. If you get the right frequencies, then it will work. This is why cellular companies are no longer, in the old days, you know, years ago, 20, 30 years ago, they were down around VHF and UHF, and then they moved up to the 800, 700 band, because they're more reliable.
So Alan, if we don't go with the Tetra that we have now, we're talking $10 million, estimated, $10 million.
Yes, ma'am, and that's a problem, because...
It is a problem.
It is. Yeah, I realize.
It's a huge problem.
It is. It is a huge problem, because you have a large county. It is a massive county, and it is, you only have so much of population.
33,000.
Exactly. And that's...
That's correct. It's more of a men row community.
Yes.
The other thing I want to ask you is, you have the budgetary cost information for potential improvements at 1.5 million. Define potential. Says budgetary cost information for potential improvements.
What page is that?
It's page 128.
128, and...
At the very top.
Okay, I'm not seeing, which paragraph you're on?
The very top.
Of 128.
Budgetary cost information for potential improvements.
Yes, and at the very bottom of 129, that total...
Is 1.4 million.
1.4 million.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, but define potential. Is it possible that this may not work?
No, what we're saying is, is we're, look, when you're dealing with county money, especially this kind of money, you're saying your potential cost could be this. Problem is, is again, let's get back, this is not your system. This is diverse power system.
I understand that.
Diverse power may come in here and say, we don't want any competitive procurement. You're going to use our vendors, and our vendors cost this much. In other words, that's why we say, you know, the potential for this stuff is going to be expensive. It could come in less, but it all depends upon how that contract is going to be with diverse power. If diverse power shackles you and say, yeah, you can spend this money, but you're going to do it our way, then, yeah, that's a problem. It could get very expensive. On the flip side, diverse power could say, we want to partner with you, and we realize you're wanting to invest in this system, let's work with you, and we'll chip in, and you'll chip in. But there's this big gap, because you do not have this agreement. We don't know what these costs could be, because it's dictated by this contract, you know... We don't know what these costs could be, because it's dictated by this contract memorandum of understanding, whatever you want to call it. The rules of engagement for doing this are not defined, because it's not your system. And that's a big unknown, a huge unknown.
Yet I don't think this county has the dollars to spend $10 million.
Yes, ma'am, and that's why I'm really thinking, these are the types of things you're going to have to do.
For the 1.4 million you're estimating going up from 79.9% to 83.2%?
Yes, yeah, yes, ma'am.
I was hoping you were reading it. Would these improvements be beneficial to diverse power?
Some of them would be. But again, diverse power is running a truck-type system, not a portable-type system.
I understand that. Let me ask you this, the two sites that have UPS systems, do we own those, or are those diverse power?
No, one of the sites you do own, it's Pine Mountain. The other site you do not own, that belongs to diverse power.
So there's no backup anywhere?
There is back...
So if it goes down, we got to wait until it...
Yes, ma'am.
...to boot, before we service it all?
Yes, ma'am. There is some backup on the microwave, but that doesn't do you any good, because if you've got these nice TETRA base units in there, but the industry standard we've ever done is, they got to be a battery, they've got to be a UPS or some kind of battery backup on that thing between the time the power goes and the time the generator kicks on.
I'm seeing a lot of messy wire rooms and cable rooms in my time, but it doesn't always mean it's wrong, it's just a mess. Is that what's going on here, when you say things like, where the wiring just looks a mess?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it just a mess, or is it wrong?
It could be, it could be, because the reporters are hearing...
Is it wrong, or could be a mess?
It could be wrong.
Okay.
But it definitely a mess.
Yeah, I know, I see the mess. I see the mess, I've seen some messes before that makes you...
Well, and again, remember, in all fairness to your, to your two-way shop that's doing this, you've not required them to. And, but the reason that they have to be nice and neat is, because when these systems go down, you get a call, if our technician gets a call at 2:00 AM because a tornado's gone through, and this site is down, they need to go in there, and nice, neat cabling makes it easy to find a problem and get it fixed. If it's just a spideworm of wires, it takes longer.
Could the county go on a hybrid system, in that we may make an investment to a portion, so that we can afford it, while we remain on TETRA with a portion? Is that possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Particularly a hybrid?
Yeah, that would be, that would be highly recommended. A lot of counties have really deepened the hole in such a situation like this, will invest in improving certain things, but they will work to make that investment in such a way that it will complement the ultimate goal of where they're going. In other words, if they select a...
Like, we could spend 1.5 billion on our own system, while we continue to live along, and then add to that. I mean, 1.5 was a drop in the bucket, but just to use that system.
Exactly, compared to what you have to do, you want to put, you want to put this money into use and to where it will complement where you're going in the long run. But without any kind of contract, that's difficult to do.
But even with a contract, we still don't have truly reasonable coverage?
Hey, well, a lot of that could be, again, not so much the design of the system as it currently sits, but the implementation of it. We suspect there is problems in the implementation, but we can't pinpoint it, because you don't have a coverage test that is the standard of performance that tells you, okay, this is the standard. If there is a problem somewhere, the coverage test can start to pinpoint exactly where something didn't get implemented right.
When you say installed...
Installed, when you have a two-way shop wow, and say, all right, we're going to put this, you had a new site up at the northwest corner of the county, and it gave some coverage improvements. That was a fairly new site, that's a diverse site. But, let's say, the coverage didn't, is not performing well, you're getting reports on the west side, yeah, there's some problems, you know, this is not quite right. So again, this gets into, did it get implemented right? Did the installer do this correctly? Or did the installer miss something? That happens quite a bit.
But if we have to use diverse's people, or could we be potentially no better off, if we don't have any control, we're having to use, introduce the data?
Well, if you, I would, I would think that a contract with diverse would stipulate that if you're going to invest money into a radio system, you have certain performance criteria that you expect out of this vendor.
And if not, what are the alternatives?
Not much, because remember, this is not your system.
And by doing all of this, we still need to get away from TETRA?
In the long run, yes. You're going to have to start planning down the road to get away from this type of system, because it's just, I just don't see this being a happy ending, and, you know, coming out where you're, you're like, yeah, this is really great. I know there's a lot of talk that this is really a good agreement between you and diverse and things like, I mean, but ultimately, for public safety, I just don't see it. I really don't.
It was probably good at the time, because it didn't cost us anything.
Exactly, yes.
The recommendations that you've made, are they in priority order?
Um, yeah...
Should we do this first, and this?
Yeah, pretty much, it's priority, is first of all, getting your two-way shop to tune up this system, and to check certain things that are on it, then do a coverage test, and then start backfilling the UPSs that you need, and that type of stuff, and checking the microwaves and things.
Diverse power, that the UPS is on their system?
Apparently not, because remember, if they're in their truck, and they can't get a hold of somebody?
It falls out of the...
No, big deal, they'll just wait until it comes back up.
Most of the area in the west part of the county that we have issues with is in, Commissioner Wood, it's in my district, mostly in my district. It's along the river, 185, down the river road, the Goat Rock Tower. It's always been an issue, ever since I've been a commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
What part does topography play in the, in the lack of coverage?
It plays a big factor. The factor that, the fact that that river kind of cuts a giant ravine, makes it difficult to get signals down in there. Every county I've ever worked at, it's got a river as a boundary, and inevitably, that is where there are coverage problems. It's challenging over on that side, especially when you put a tower site, and you calculate the numbers, and you realize you're getting very little for your money. It's frustrating. But yes, you're correct, that topography is a big factor.
The other thing, and I'm just curious about this, northwest Harris Fire Department is way up in the corner, and I noticed that you didn't have any interviews with them, am I correct in reading that?
Yes, ma'am, I think...
I saw that you had interviews with Ann Hamilton, Everly Slade, in Pine Mountain, but I could have missed it.
If I didn't, I didn't get any, I did talk to the fireperson at the chief's meeting.
Yeah, I was at the chief's meeting.
Yeah, and I got some information from them. The problem with that northwest site, and this is another thing, is that diverse power is everywhere, they're in multiple counties, so they put them where they need them. That site, as good as it is, and it is built fairly well, out of all the sites it's at, and some other ones are actually fairly nice, it's too close to the county line. So a lot of, when you place a site somewhere, you want as much of that coverage in your county, not going out of the county. So when you have a site that's very close to a county line, that is a difficult issue. Manchester is another one, it's outside of the county. But it is three miles or so outside of the county, so we figured it's giving some coverage on that corner, so we included it, even though it's outside the county, because we figured county needs every bit of help they can get. Count that one in, because it does provide some coverage. But again, that, tower placement's critical, when it's your system, and making sure your county is covered.
And can you give me some of the issues with the Goat Rock site?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The issues with the Goat Rock?
The Goat Rock site, yes. The Goat Rock site has a lot of complaints coming out of that area down there. That's a fairly new site, from what I understand.
I don't think it's been there. I've been at Commissioner's six and a half years, not believe it's been there. I was to that time.
The problem with the Goat Rock site is that it has one link coming to it, there's no redundancy there. We also suspect there's some technical issues that are going on at that site, and we've been particularly interested in that site, as far as how it connects, and how many alarms are they getting from lack of communication to the Goat Rock site. They have tried to do some improvements there by doing a UPS system on the microwave, excuse me, but the site itself is highly suspect, to me. I would like the coverage performance test to be done, to find out just how bad is it is it down there. Again, this gets back into that implementation issue, where it may not have been installed correctly. There's some issues there that just concern us, but until you go through it, run some tests, to tune the system up, like we recommend, and also do a coverage test, it's hard to determine, because all I'm getting is reports from public safety people. And that tells me something is wrong, but exactly what it is, I don't really know. I think it's a combination of coverage and connectivity is a problem down there.
And if there were towers to be erected in other locations, what's the approximate cost per tower?
Approximate cost here is around $700,000. Now that's more expensive than diverse pays for, but then again, with diverse, and their cost on doing their towers, they don't have the priorities you do. So they don't care if it's not battery backup, not grounded right, you know, if it doesn't quite perform as well, because we use trucks, not portals. So they can, they can get away with a cheaper one, because that's, they work for profit. This public safety systems, they cost about that much, to make sure, again, if you have a rash of tornadoes, an ice storm, whatever emergency hits this county, that that system is there, running at the worst of conditions. So it, yeah, it's expensive.
Does diverse power provide 911 service to any other counties?
Not that I know of.
Second thing, and if I remember it correctly, there was some legislation that created some type of statewide 911 authority. I don't know whether you're familiar with that or not, this past year, and I don't know whether it was funded or not, but it was, I think it was some sort of authority created. Yeah, I don't think it was funded, I don't know. You don't know whether there's, my question was involving that, is whether or not there's a statewide move or incentive to try to get everybody on one system in the state of Georgia. If so, what is that system?
There was, there was some talk about that years ago, from my understanding, but that quickly died away, when there was a number of lobbyists that swarmed the Capitol, because the vendors smelled of dollars, and so the state government backed off, said, we're not getting any of this.
A few minutes ago, Commissioner Andrews mentioned, asked you about hybrid type of system. Could you address that, as maybe a transition out of TETRA, instead of scrapping and rebuilding it, is a way you can do that?
Um, yeah, it, it, that depends on where you're going. The problem is, is that you've got a, you've got this radio that's from Europe, it's a TETRA radio, it doesn't have any other technology that is really appropriate, so it makes it One thing that might, that we talked about in here, was also taking away the paging of this TETRA system, which is very inadequate, and trying to develop a VHF paging that would be more appropriate, that would penetrate people's homes and stuff, the volunteer firing can actually hear the thing. That, that's a kind of a hybrid, you're starting to migrate away. And then, at that point, just looking at your sites, and figuring out what could be reused, maybe working with diverse power, and saying, all right, you have a site here, can we co-locate and put something here to help bring some of this cost down? Anything you can do to try to figure out where you need to be, and what can be done to make that path as least resistant as possible, or at least costly as possible. A hybrid-type system is difficult here, in that these radios just don't lend themselves well to that, whereas if some of the, you could, it is possible, but it takes some research to try to figure out how to do that, and that all depends upon where you're going, and what your timeframe is, and how you can give it to their...
And I guess when I was talking about hybrid, I was thinking, let's say we put $5 million toward it, just to pull it out. Could we have $5 million toward our goal, so that wherever that spot is, works well, even though on this other spot, we're still using TETRA? I was just going to say, can we, can we move incrementally toward the perfect solution, rather than having to do the whole thing at one time?
That's possible, but that gets sticky, because then now you're asking public safety to carry, especially like Sheriff's Department, two radios. And that, that gets a bit cumbersome. There may be ways of investing in radios, newer radios, that would help make that transition possible, where they do a combination, but it wouldn't be with the current ones that you're using now. It'd have to be a, you know, a way of doing a...
Radio frequencies, while you're in the mail?
Yeah, you, but those radios are costly. Those are very costly, those multiband radios, to do that. That's what makes this really, really a tough nut to crack, because you're just in a, not a good spot. And we...
We appreciate your honesty, even though it's bad news.
Yeah, I mean, we, I've had Cusack come down here personally, and they're pleased with this, and I just cannot figure out a easy way out of this thing. And that's why, that's one of the reasons I brought it down here, is that, you know, it's just not a good situation. It really isn't. And like you said, it's like telling somebody they got cancer, it's just not good news. Cannot figure out a, a way, a less painful way. So, anyway, that's, any other questions? I hate to be the master, be the one to bring bad news, but it's, it's good to know the reality of it. It really is. And the more that you understand the reality, and what the situation is with the radio system, it might, it might, it could be going to be to get into a solution, getting this fine. The one thing I can tell you is that most of these counties, all of these counties, that end up biting the bullet, and going ahead and doing what needs to be done, end up with an asset that lasts the county for years. I'll give you an example, the city of Conyers, years ago, went into an 800 system. This was when the technology was coming out, and it was just, it was expensive, these radios were expensive. This little city of Conyers Police Department, they had this 800 system, when nobody had an 800 system. They ended up investing in it, and it was a bitter pill for them, but they ended up investing in it. Years later, they called me, said, all right, we can't get a price for this system. And what I told them is that, well, you've got a tremendous asset with these frequencies. They ended up getting some frequencies that many counties and the state would love to have. Conyers is just a little police department, they ended up spending $3 million on a radio system, it's a two-site system, but they have the best frequencies, and they have really fantastic coverage and reliability, and it's a tremendous asset now to the county, to the city. They will have that for many years to come. They crossed that hurdle early, and they went ahead and paid the price, and now they have the benefits of it. And these types of systems, it's a bitter pill to swallow, but if you're interested in seeing... But if you're interested in seeing some of these cities and counties that have done this, I've got a number of customers in the Atlanta area that I can be willing to take you to and you can talk to them and see their systems. And I would suggest you do that because this is expensive. And it's good to know who has done it, what they went through, what caused them to go to that level, and what worked for them and what didn't work for them. And I can set you up to go and see it, to at least get a firsthand view of a system based. You've seen pictures of your system. I can take you to some of these more advanced systems and show them to you. But the real advantage of that is time. And that is that when you have, somebody has a flat tire and they go off the road and, you know, they're in a ditch somewhere, or you've got a fire and you go into a house, time makes all the difference in the world. And that's why they do that. Because they don't want to have to deal with the radio systems not functioning. And they are committed to it. And I've seen that, I couldn't believe that Conyers was committed to doing that. They were going to get that radio system one way or the other. Commissioners wanted it. We got them a very good deal on a system and it performs flawlessly, but that's why they do it.
Can you get us $3 million on a system?
Mary, if you're the size of Conyers, I can, unfortunately. You're huge. This county is huge.
$10 million is a lot of money for this county.
It is.
A great deal of money for this county.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And I don't even know that we could fund that.
I agree. I mean, it's not a good situation. That's why I'm saying, the most important thing at this point is to get with this contract with Diverse Power, work out an agreement with these folks, then invest with them. Convince them that as you're investing in their system, they get benefits from it as well. A partnership generally works out. I, Whitfield County did the same thing. They partnered with the Tennessee Valley Group. They, Catusa County brought in additional coverage. They worked together. They have a memorandum of understanding. It was pretty expensive to be a member of that, $600,000, to get a seat at the table. But their rates were cheap. They managed the system. Catusa County provided coverage into their county. They provide coverage into Catusa County in some areas and provide redundancy. So these types of arrangements work out better if you can get there. But that's the short term. In the long term, that has to be another answer. But the short term could last quite well if the conditions are good, based on the contract.
You just reminded me of something else I wanted to ask you. Page 130, we have the life cycle cost analysis.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have the years here.
Yes, ma'am.
For years 2018, 2021, 23, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, 32, 33, 35, and 36. The estimated cost would be $57,000, almost $58,000.
Yes, ma'am.
If that's for each one of those years.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, and then you have for the other years, 1922, 24, 31, and 34, the cost would be $66,440 for each one of those years.
Yes, ma'am.
As to those costs?
Yes, ma'am. The reason being is that, like I said in the experience, about 1% of the radios are either going to be lost or damaged. Something's going to happen to them generally. So from a budgetary planning standpoint, you plan on about 1% replacement of radios. And that's what we did here. And again, maintenance on your nine towers is pretty expensive because you've got a lot of towers that are going to have to be tuned up. And plus, you're going to have to have these portables and models and console radios be, have maintenance done to them. As we heard a situation where there was a mobile radio that was having coverage problems. And the two-way shop looked at it, found out there was a problem in the installation of the radio. So you have to have these radios maintained once a year. They have to go through and be tuned up and checked to make sure that they're working at peak performance. Batteries have to be replaced about every two and a half years on your portable. So we calculated in that cost. And then, of course, at 10 years, you generally just have to replace all your radios because they get beat up, they get worn out, it's time. And that's when you're looking at planning a budget for maintaining a system or maintenance. It's really critical. If you don't maintain this thing and maintain the radios, performance degrades and you have problems.
With the 10-minute system, with the costs for the month, would maintenance cost be approximately the same?
No, ma'am, it will be much more. It's, those types of systems are pretty expensive to maintain. Generally, what we do in those situations, if you're going to go that type of route, you're doing an RFP. And when you're spending that kind of money, we usually compress to make sure you get five years of maintenance free. And most vendors will provide that if you're spending that kind of money, especially if there's a competitive procurement. We also require them to give a fixed cost for years, you know, six through 15. So you know what that cost is for maintaining those systems. But they are, they get expensive. You're talking around $200,000, $300,000 a year to maintain those systems because they're very high-tech. They have microwave systems that have got to be adjusted and maintained. They get expensive.
What other counties do we? We know they're not on TETRA and they can't afford this.
It's P25 systems.
You know, it's going backwards in technology. Does that make sense for us to do, as far as being able to have reliable coverage?
Well, the problem is in getting into, all right, let's look at some of your options here, your VHF options. That's a very cheap alternative, very cheap technology, but very susceptible to interference. And it's also highly unregulated. The coordination on the VHF band is like the Wild West. I mean, there is all kind of crazy stuff that goes on with coordination. And you end up getting interference from other counties and cities, especially if there is a solar event or propagation event and you start getting interference from across the country. VHF has tremendous problems. That's why a lot of counties and cities get away from VHF because it's, you can purchase VHF frequencies, but they are very expensive. That's what. For a pair of frequencies, you could be around $300,000, $400,000 for just one pair. And you would need a pair for every agency. So it gets very costly. The state of Virginia did that. They had the money. They bought these frequencies for a P25 VHF system. But it takes big money to make a VHF system really work without a lot of headaches. And VHF is just not something generally that we would recommend unless you've got lots of money and can afford frequencies. UHF is what you're on. UHF systems don't have the coverage in VHF. They are generally cleaner, they don't have quite as much interference, but they do have interference. And they're a little bit more regulated as far as the frequencies. But they don't have a very big coverage footprint, especially yours. Yours has a very small coverage footprint. So it's much more costly to start adding these towers in. And then a lot of the cost is making the system durable during a weather event. That's where a lot of that cost is, making it tough and being able to operate. When you get into UHF, you have some problems there because it just doesn't have quite the footprint. So your cost per site, you end up having to have more sites. And then, of course, the next step up is the 700, 800 systems that we talked about. They're much more expensive, but they do perform very well, especially if they're implemented correctly. So those are your three options. There's just not a lot of options that they give you. And when you went into that TETRA system, to that digital trunk technology, you advanced into a nicer technology and a system in this county that covered a lot better than your VHF. But you pretty much put them into a technical position that is very difficult to back out of.
At this point, pending the outcome of a contract with 2A and Diverse.
Yes, ma'am.
How good that contract appears, you probably shouldn't be doing anything else along this line.
Yeah, I would agree because basically you'd be spending money on a system that's not yours. Until you have some kind of agreement in place, you really can't spend the money on something like that. Because you could be asked to leave tomorrow after you upgraded their system so nicely legally, they can turn around and say, "Thank you very much. Now I'll get off our system."
So you're advocating?
First priority is getting this contract taken care of. The terms and conditions of that contract will dictate how you do these implementations and how much they really cost. These numbers are pretty high because I'm anticipating worst-case scenarios where you have to resort to all the costs.
So when you look through these pictures and you see things like an improper shelter, that improper shelter belongs to Diverse Power?
Yes, ma'am.
So you look at another place, it says lack of an ice bridge and grounding methods. That's because Diverse Power hasn't put an ice bridge and a grounding method there. So all that you're describing here, you know, if a citizen picked this up, they'd say, "My goodness, why hasn't the county done this?" Well, this is Diverse Power stuff.
Right.
And you're pointing out to us the weaknesses in their system that we're using. Now, I just want to make that clear that, you know, a citizen is going to pick this up and say, "Well, why don't they have a proper shelter here?" Well, because it doesn't belong to us.
Yeah, it doesn't belong to you. And of course, Diverse Power, they're working for profit and they're not exactly compelled to.
To go fix the shelter.
Yeah, to go fix the shelter or something because their nature, their business, their traffic on that radio system is not that critical.
But it does seem like they would do things like connect the ground connection. I mean, that sounds like a pretty important thing for them to do.
Well, and I agree.
They're a power company, aren't they?
Yeah, I agree.
Don't they know that those things were important?
I agree.
Speed line cables not installed on a proper cable ladder. Some of these things, if I saw this and I were the CEO of Diverse Power, I would say, "This is how we're operating our stuff?"
I agree. I agree. But I see this in a lot of places. It's just their complacency. You find that technicians, even in public safety systems, are very complacent. Over the years, this is, you know, "I've got to get out by Friday" and this kind of stuff. And I see this not only in a, here, but in public safety systems, in the city of Atlanta. I see this kind of stuff and I have to point that out to them. And the reason it's that way is because there's not somebody there demanding a higher standard so that it performs better. And I point that out to customers and a lot of times they realize it and go, "Yeah, you're right. We're going to fix that." And they generally get it done. But it's just, that's the way we've always done it. So this is not unique to just Diverse Power. Let me point that out. I see that in a lot of places.
Is there any chance that there's a technology on the close horizon that can be some type of booster from a mobile unit to portable?
Well, they can do that. I mean, that has been tried. The problem is, is that in the nature of public safety, say like you're in a sheriff's office and you're in a high-speed pursuit, the suspect ditches the vehicle, starts running. A lot of times you're not going to sit there and go, "Well, why don't we get this hooked up with this mobile and then I'm going to..." They're going to just grab that radio and go. And a lot of times they'll go out of the coverage area of whatever little technology is there. So it has been introduced and that technology is there, but it just doesn't bode well for public safety. It just hasn't been really all that accepted.
And is this on TETRA or just in general?
In general, you know, for any technology. It's there. It's just not something that works very well.
If Diverse Power sent a notice and said, "We're walking," as of November 1st or January 1st, what does the county do?
Well, you do have a TETRA system that the school board's on. I think that the school board would just have to be booted off and you'd have to take over that and use it. You have no recourse. There is no, there is nothing legally binding to keep you on their system.
But if they said, "You're off audit, then we've got a big time to roll."
Yes, sir. That is correct.
How many millions in big time?
Ten.
Ten?
Ten million plus, probably.
Well, that's $10 million to build a system.
And that's time, too.
I was about to say, that's $10 million today.
They would take about two years to build one of that. Or it would take you. It would take you about two to three years to build something like that.
So we were shut down the 911 sector two years while we built them?
Yeah, you would have to basically move on to the school board system immediately and deal with whatever.
How do you kick them off, the sheriff's system?
You say, "Please remove."
Well, you act like, you know, we could do it by, in the domain or something. Correct.
I don't know. I mean, that's, that's how I suppose.
And that system that they're on be shared, is what I.
Yeah, to some extent, as far as I know, they can be shared. But as far as what kind of coverage it has, I couldn't tell you. Because we were looking at the public safety in TETRA. We didn't really look at your school board system. We know it's existent. We've seen it, but.
So it's buses all over the county, every day?
Mobile radios, not portable.
There's a difference.
Yes, there is a difference.
I was going to say, there's a difference.
So I would suggest the next thing you do is concentrate on that contract. Terms and conditions are very important. And then at that, then you would look at what you would need to do to upgrade the performance of the system. But the first priority would be the contract.
Nick has agreed with him.
Yes. So, let's assume we have a contract in hand that's all signed and approved and we're ready to do these 1.5 million improvements. So you have to design those improvements, bid them out, and install, and make sure they're installed correctly. That would take time.
Yes.
And who would do all that technical work in technical specs?
We could do it, the cost of which is already calculated in.
It's already built in, it's $10 million.
Yes, we figured that would be important, that would be in there.
Or it's built in the 1.4?
Yes. Either us or whoever you choose. That's your decision. But that cost is in there to implement.
To design, bid?
Implement. If the contract says you can do a bid. If I may say, you can't do a bid. I don't know what Diverse would say on that.
How would it take to do all these things?
I think we put the timelines in there.
Problem?
Yeah. A lot of that depends upon, I'd say, we'd have to do an RFP on some of these systems. Some of them look around like six months. If you were to implement this in sequential order, you'd look at about a year to get something like this done.
And we might be at 82, 85, 86% coverage with the initial standards modified.
Yep.
That's the best we could hope for.
Yeah, at this particular point, yeah. I wouldn't go much beyond that because your return on your investment would be pretty poor.
Thank you. Just letting us know where we are technically.
This is, this is what we needed.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I would not look forward to telling you this.
We can't fix it, we don't understand.
Yeah, I understand.
No.
We're, we're in a, in a, John, to pursue the agreement?
Yep.
We'll keep doing that.
It's a motion, and we both need to deny our...
I don't think... Yeah, we've already approved that. Okay. All right. The next item is G.D.O.T.'s support for their suggestion that a roundabout at State Road 219 and State Road 315 go rock road.
I mean, if I could, I'd like to share a little background on this.
Please do.
This is in District 4. About three years ago, I asked Nancy to get with D.O.T. We've had a number of serious accidents at this intersection. So I asked if she would contact D.O.T. and ask them if they would do a study. I had had several requests for stoplight, there's a blinking light there at present. They came back and basically said, "No, we don't think anything is due." So a couple of months ago, I asked Nancy to go back to D.O.T. and ask them to come back and do another study. And this is what they came back with. I'm not an engineer, I think they're going to have trouble putting around the mountain there because there's not an awful lot of roadway. But they said they can. So that's how, that's how the sound turned them out.
When you say you've been a number of breaks, then, I mean, how many are you talking about? I mean, any one is enough, but I'm just saying...
Since I've been a commissioner, there's probably been, I'd say at least, well, I don't know how many, but I would say...
Enough that you're talking about.
Because you come over the lines, right? And you're like, "Line."
And G.D.O.T. has access to all that information?
Yes, they do.
Their studies. In this, I did ask that Commissioner Langston's request if they had any kind of preliminary plan for this, and they do not. They said any plan they would have, anytime soon would be just a basic, this is what a roundabout looks like. Nothing about the roadway, nothing about what's going to be needed there later down the road.
And I really did not expect, this is me intending this, weakness.
I don't get it, because they set the understanding, the other support.
Right. But they have launched pretty fast on this one.
Uh, yes, they have.
But if additional right of way is needed?
They did mention what would happen.
They are not mentioning any of that.
No. Now, they're not looking forward until they give this.
Yes, but we give that, we're still not obligated to purchase any right of way. Not yet. I mean, they're not going to do anything else until they get back to my office.
Right, yes.
You're right, I understand that, just...
Now, that makes it slow down, it takes several years.
Correct. They are now doing, they're doing turn lanes on Route 219, which were approved in 2000.
Yeah.
So they're just, they're just now doing that. They have to be finished by, when is 2019 or 2020? The project has to be finished. And they haven't even really started, other than obtaining the lights and light for those turn lanes. So that's how long it takes. But I agree we can get something, maybe some type of safety mechanism at that intersection.
And to their short-term fix with this was to just cut that right of way off. And they would take care of that, they would take care of that. This is their long-term fix.
But I guess under this, we just support the consideration in agreeing to whatever energy would be required for any lighting to be installed, which may or may not be with the solar.
Well, you know, they're using the solar at the rapid clashing beacon at the country store that's on us, but it's the solar, so there's no cost there. And he wasn't sure if that's what that would be, if he thought it would be...
I would assume we would have to approve any other cost for the company's account.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
I would certainly want to make sure that we were protected from that standpoint.
Those both state roads?
Yes, it's one.
They're both state roads, yes.
Yes, they are both state roads.
But they want us to maintain it inside the roundabout?
Well, I learned to drive on traffic circles once, which is a roundabout. I don't know anybody who liked it. Everybody was scared to death every time they went around it. For thirty-seven meters, I worked sometimes in New Jersey, sometimes full-time. They had lots of traffic circles, which they are getting rid of. And the roundabout in Southern Hill, New Jersey, was particularly notorious or infamous because it was, it was very common to get on that one and get caught having to go around two or three times. In fact, my wife went around three times once. Because she just couldn't, once she got on, you couldn't get off. The only one that I ever remember that wasn't a problem was one out in South Jersey, which is about fifty-eight miles from the nearest town. And I only once, the number of times that I went through there, I only saw one other car once, so that wasn't a traffic problem. But the rest of them all were traffic problems.
And this, we're talking about a single lane, right?
Yeah.
And then you back up traffic, and slow it down.
Is it possible, do you feel like, if you ask them if there's another option?
Sure. I think, I think I can just send them any kind of email. But, you know, D.O.T.'s leaning toward roundabouts.
I know.
They're pumping up whole regionally. And as a matter of fact, I think they're going to talk about any improvements on 27 coming up into Harris County. At what point, I don't know, somewhere around...
Let's tell you the shape. How much shape do they have?
I guess we're going to go back to them and see what other options.
Okay, so no action, just one other?
Yeah. All right, next we got two documents that we now have, and this is to continue this, is a discount on property liability and workers' compensation insurance premium. Annual documents, John, is anything you need to say about this? I wouldn't think so. That's a bit of a continuation.
I think pretty much every year we get this, we get this discount.
If we want a discount, we better find these papers.
We're going to take a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Set to the second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, if you can raise your hand. All right, next is appointments to the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. I believe that's one of them, and then the Airport Committee. I believe Commissioner Langston had someone that she wanted to appoint.
I do.
The Aging Advisory Council.
I have someone who's extremely interested in serving on this coun, this council, is Beth Smith. And in the, in the interest of being completely transparent, that's my daughter, so I will not hold on this. She is an RN, twenty-seven years experience. She's currently an employee of Shepherd's Body Center out in Atlanta. She's had ICU experience, she's been a case manager for about twenty of those years. She's had home health experience for about five years. But she also has a great affinity for the older population and patients, and I think she would make a great member on this council.
And by the way, this is not a county thing, this is the River Valley Regional Commission.
Right.
They're like four people.
We can have as many as four people on that.
But they'll take what they need.
Take what they need. So... And I appreciate your seeing where it is. I would then make the motion that we nominate Beth Smith to be on.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, if you can raise your hand. As is 4-0 in one of the seats. Okay, if there are others that anyone else thinks of that they would like to maybe have on that, please bring them forward to us. And we can go ahead and let River Valley know about Beth Smith.
Yes.
Next is the Airport Committee. We had a discussion on the Airport Committee that it kind of came into being. Board of Commissioners had a committee, the Chamber of Commerce had a committee, and we agreed between those two bodies to merge those two committees. We have been operating them for several years now, but no real clear definition. I think in the discussions that we've had, we decided that the current, the current members all be nominated at this point in time to serve a four-year term, beginning July 1 of this year and ending June 30th of 2021. The members of the committee were the Airport Manager, and these would be the positions that would be on the committee. Whoever holds those positions at the time, the Airport Manager, currently Bill Champion, the County Manager, currently Randy Dowling, the Airport Consultant, which we can't, currently Amanda Hill, Maze Hour, the Harris County Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, currently Colin Martin, the Commission Chairman, which is, and then it's the County Clerk, which is currently Nancy McMichael. And then we had another Commissioner, and that Commissioner's Jim Woods wants to be a second Commissioner. I don't know whether we specifically wanted to be District Two or not.
Well, it's because of the airports.
Because it's in the airports in that district.
That's, that's what it was.
I just wanted to clarify that, too, before we move forward. So that is the recommendation I would doubt. I would entertain a motion for that.
As you're talking about the current positions, or for the at-large?
I would say for all of them. If we want to have something, you know, if we wanted to go with it, have a motion in a second, then we could discuss whether, you know, if we wanted to change this.
Well, I'll move that the various positions that you mentioned be the positions, be the lowest positions, so on the Airport Committee along with one at-large citizen.
Okay, and that's currently Linda Dawson. She started on that, actually, as Chairman of the Chamber.
Yes.
She does a lot with the fly-ins and open times. I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion and a second discussion.
So does your motion include Linda continuing in that position?
Yeah, I, I did talk to her, and she was her usual enthusiastic self, and said that she would accept it and understood how important it would be. Nominate Linda.
Okay, Ms. Sucker, we got a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
Are we going to do something as far as District Two at this time?
That's, it'll be time to discuss. I mean, the motion at this point in time would be to approve it as it was listed here, but, you know, discussion could change that if that was so desired.
I think the Commissioner in that district is most likely to hear from citizens around the airport if there are concerns. Before they would fire millionaires, leave, they would call Jim. I think having it as the Commissioner of that district is wise, and I trust him.
No, I, I agree because of the things you would hear and things that would affect the citizens that may not be normally on the airport's radar.
Okay.
So I think District Two.
All right.
And we are going to add Colin as one?
Yeah, Colin is there as the, because he is now the President, CEO along with Harris County Chamber.
I don't type that, he wasn't there.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so the motion at this point in the second still stands with the current members of the committee continuing, starting, starting a new four-year term, beginning July 1 of this year. Started July 1 of this year.
People know the positions hold or not, holding on.
And they hold on, yeah.
There's a not four-year term.
It's a four-year term, okay.
They don't, how many times does that add up?
At-large, okay, all right. Okay. All in favor of the motion, please if you can raise your hand. Motion for adjournment. All right, good.
Do you recognize Colin with the same name?
Sure, I'd be happy to recognize Colin. For most of you who don't know, Colin Martin, start today was, last week was his training week with Jason.
Last week was free, this week I paid.
With Jason last week, and the day was Colin's first day. Actually, he started out putting in overtime, but being up there yesterday and taking advantage of the holiday when no one was around so he could get his hands around something. So welcome, congratulations, and we'll be working with him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other new business? All right, and then we move into Mr. Dowling's portion. The first one is proposal for the award of the RFP that went out regarding the CAD system for the 911 EMS.
Mr. Chairman, this is, again, it's a proposal award for the CAD system portion. Again, TUSA prepared bids, inspects, sent it out. We've got, we did receive three responses on August 18. They came in, did personal presentations to the selection committee, and now TUSA is here, Wendy Breifer and Dennis Ward is here to present their recommendations for the CAD system.
All right, thank you, folks.
Okay, we performed a needs assessment and evaluation on the current aging CAD system as directed by the Director of Commissioners. We developed the specifications based on the telecommunicators' needs and wants, and then we released those specifications and evaluated those responses. The RFP closed on August 18. We got three responses, PTS Solutions, Southern Software, and Centered System Software Incorporated, which goes by SSI. So if I say SSI, that's them. We evaluated all the technical responses first and the pricing afterwards so that one would not influence the other. Technical was seventy-five percent overall, and pricing was twenty-five percent. On 28th of August, we did oral presentations of each of those vendors. And in attendance to evaluate were Randy Dowling, Monty Davis, the Director of the 911, Deputy Director Jamie White, IT, Alex Santiago, Intel communicators, Mark Cardwell, and Chris Williams. We also gave them the ability to give a best and final offer, and the final evaluation included the total cost of ownership for Harris County over a five-year period. These were our evaluation results. SSI was first, Southern Software, and the PTS Solutions came in third. Our recommendations are to approve the initiation of the contract negotiations with SSI in the amount of eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This is inclusive of the base system, the MAP cleanup, automatic vehicle locator for six vehicles, and I'll get into that a little bit more. The project will start on September 15 and be operational by December 31 of this year. If the suitable contract cannot be negotiated with SSI, we would go with a second right proposer, which is Southern Software. We came in with this project on... We came in with this project under budget, we had three hundred thousand dollars, and we came in under budget. We have about twenty left, twenty thousand dollars. And we, I want you to keep it on the side for contingency, just in case something comes up between now and then, and we have to, um, a service call or something. ABL is Automatic Vehicle Locator, I want to give you a little bit of information about this, it's for your county vehicles. Pine Mountain PD, Harris County Sheriff's Office, already had the SSI system, the mobile product, and that's the laptops in their cars. They're also bringing Waverly PD and Hamilton on as well. The CAD works with the mobile ABL product, so interoperability within the county will be really great. You'll be able to share information between those agencies, and we think it'll make your response times better, better for your citizens as well. Any questions?
So that cost doesn't include this warranty maintenance of the very last time?
That is, we want to include the first year, that's...
With anything I can call, the first year would be fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars additional, and then... The one hundred thirty-two dollars annually for each vehicle, explaining what that is.
So, uh, as part of the ABL option that SSI has, for each vehicle you bring onto the system, there's an annual cost of one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
What is that for? Is there a maintenance or upgrade or something?
It's their software license fee that they charge for that, for that ABL unit to be onto the system. Kind of like with your cell phone, you get charged a subscriber fee, it's, look at it as a subscriber fee to be on the network.
But if there are upgrades in that software, is it included, or are those vehicles...